I'll call the meeting to order, and the clerk will call the roll.
Bartlett?
Here.
Hirsch?
Here.
Swadley?
Here.
Johnson?
Here.
Reeves?
Here.
Mieske?
Here.
Engelberger?
Here.
Jensen?
Here.
Truhl?
Aye.
Here.
O'Connor?
Here.
Duranzik?
Here.
And Boersma is absent in excuse. There are 11 older persons present.
Thank you. We'll begin with communications, and I wanted to share just a couple of things to start off with. Next Tuesday evening, the Stoughton Wellness Coalition is holding an Alcohol and Drug-Free Kids Panel Discussion. The River Bluff Drug and Alcohol Use Ser- River Bluff Drug and Alcohol Use Survey Results will be presented by Todd Davici. Officer Davici is the School Resource Officer. The Effects of Chemical Dependency on Psychological Development is presented by Dr. John Lewis. How to Talk to Your Kids About Drugs and Alcohol, as well as Signs of Use, is presented by Renee Wilburg, Counselor at UW Adolescence Alcohol Drug Assessment Intervention Program. And that's next Tuesday, March 6th, at the River Bluff Middle School, at free dinner at 5:30, and a 6:00 PM panel discussion. So another really good program sponsored by our Wellness Coalition. There's also a public meeting coming up regarding the reconstruction of Highway N, and this will be March 20th, from 5:30 to 7:30. And it's the reconstruction of County Highway N from its intersection with County Trunk A, northerly to its intersection with US 51, located in the city of Stoughton and town of Dunkirk. And this is an informational meeting Tuesday, March 20th, from 5:30 until 7:00 at the Stoughton Fire Department. And I know we do have other communications as well. Elder Person, Hirsch.
I guess this is, I know Matt's trying to get settled up, but this, I guess I would like to hear from Matt. I know I'm putting you on the spot, but is there anything for council to be aware of when it comes to, as a councilperson, posting on a public Facebook page? I know there was problems with public open meetings laws. I mean, it's one thing as a public citizen, but is there, what do other communities have with respect to posting as a councilperson on Facebook page?
Well, I don't pretend to be an expert on the social media environment. It's a fairly complicated area, but I think I'll do the best I can to answer the question. So, as I understand it, folks who are elected officials, they have to be mindful of the open meetings law, but I don't think that engaging in public discourse, that could be giving a speech to an organization, posting on a Facebook site, sending in a letter to the editor, I don't think those things implicate the open meeting law. So I think you still have a right as an elected official to engage in public discourse, to speak on issues of public concern, to express your opinions. I think the open meeting law becomes a concern when members of a governing body, members of a committee, for example, start using something like the Internet to communicate with each other in a way that can involve a meeting, what could come to be defined as a meeting. So, and I could see potentially the use of something like Facebook or other social media sites. I suppose you could end up with a situation where if you have a number of people who are on a committee or on a governing body start to engage in a discussion using a platform like that, where that could start to cross the line. So, you know, when I've given presentations on this in the past, I've talked about email mainly, and the guidance from the Attorney General's Office. We don't have really much case law on this. The guidance from the Attorney General's Office is to be careful with email, particularly when you're communicating amongst one another. What we think is that if the communication starts to look like a discussion, then that can implicate the open meetings law.
Okay. I just wanted to be clear, because there was a lot of people that were asking me what, if that was right or wrong, and I just wanted everybody to be on the same page. So thank you very much for your answer.
Thank you. Elder Person Engelberger?
Thank you, Your Honor. I just wanted to inform the council that Alder Sid Boersma asked me to let everybody know that he is not able to be here tonight because he's in Florida at the site of the Miami school shooting from a week or two ago, a couple weeks ago. And he's consoling and consulting with some of the people that were affected by that down there. So, just wanted to let everybody know that.
Thank you. Working with the Red Cross again, doing a great job down there. Elder Person Truhl?
Thank you, Your Honor. On the agenda, I did ask to have a, provide a quick RDA update. Hopefully you all received email from me yesterday. I basically just provided the current timetable that we're looking at, at RDA for the eventual creation of the new tax incremental district number eight. And again, it will be, we'll be looking to, this timetable was put together by our consultant, Gary Becker. And what it does is it results in us hopefully having the new TID district in place by the end of the year. So I want to make sure people are aware of that. And then the second thing I wanted to make everyone aware of is on Wednesday evening, March 14th, at 7:00, in the fire department training room, we will be having Sonia Kreisel, who is a city planner and economic development manager for Monona, will be coming down. We'll have a regular RDA meeting between 5:30 and 7:00, but then we've asked Sonia to come down and to make a presentation to us about what they're doing in Monona. Fundamentally, Roger Springman became aware of what they've been up to, and he shared with us the last couple of RDA meetings, where we went through the long, drawn-out RFP process a year and a half ago to try and get a master developer for the riverfront redevelopment. Monona's gone a different direction. They've put together effectively a wish list and have put together about a four-page brochure that they're taking out and talking to different developers about. And effectively, they have about five acres of land available, and what they've done is basically said, "We're looking for a developer that may be willing to help us find a hotel, or some mixed use, or whatever." And the RDA thought this was very interesting to find out what, obviously it's a different process than we took last time. We also think it'd be a great opportunity to kind of hear, they're just ahead of us in terms of kind of timeline, so we thought it'd be a great opportunity to find out what, again, one of our neighbors is doing. And so, I'll remind you of this in the, at the next council meeting as well, but if you want to put it in your calendar, again, it's Wednesday evening, March 14th, in the fire department training room. And again, it will be at 7:00. Our regular RDA meeting will be before it. Again, back to the timeline, our intent is to use the regular RDA meetings. Each of those meetings, we will make sure we're updating and trying to stay on board with this timetable. So I wanted to just kind of bring you up, and as we have other events, I'll make sure that we make everyone aware and invite you to join us, as well as the public. So, thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other communications? Elder Person Johnson?
Thank you, Your Honor. I sent out an email that I think you guys all received. I sent it out late last night. I apologize. This was back in October when I went to the Wisconsin Historical Society, that I spoke of some of the programs that I went to up there. And it's, I wanted to get it out, and Rodney does have, if we wanted to look at the slides, but I don't know if anybody really wants to look through them again. But the city planner there is very high on preservation of historical buildings. And I took a couple examples of the tour that I went on, and he also did a talk. And I think he would be another good advocate to come down, as well as the architect he worked with, and even the architect that worked on that hotel. It just was incredible what they did. So, they're trying to bring back the downtown historical part of La Crosse. So, if you guys have any questions, I can answer them later. Thank you.
Great. Thank you. Any further questions or questions? I'm already gone into the meeting. Any further comments or communications to share? Elder Person?
I handed out some of the options and for what we're going to talk about later for the highway trailer building. And I talked to Elder Person Swadley, and he thought that I should probably present that during, when we are actually on that subject. So, just want to let everybody know at that time.
Great. Thank you. All right. We'll move along to minutes and reports are in your packet. Public comment period. We do have three, four people that have already signed up to speak. If you are wishing to speak, there are registration forms in the hallway. Each speaker will have three minutes to speak, and then Holly will let you know when you have 30 seconds remaining. And first registered to speak is Bob McGeever, 309 West Randolph Street.
Yes, Bob McGeever, 309 West Randolph Street. I am here to speak in support of Resolution 40-2018 authorizing the immediate demolition of the highway trailers building. We should tear it down now before somebody gets hurt.
Thank you. And next registered to speak is Tricia Sees, 832 West Jefferson Street.
Hello, everyone. Tricia Sees, 832 West Jefferson Street. I want to thank you again for your service to our city. I'm a thoughtful, intelligent person, and I believe I understand all of the issues surrounding the, I am speaking in favor of Resolution 40. I believe I understand all the issues surrounding the building, the redevelopment area, and I ask you to please support this resolution and vote in favor of it. There are lots of other folks like me who understand all of the issues around it, and we would really like to see the building gone. We, I'll speak for myself. I would really like to see the city move forward, and I fully understand the value of history in town here. And in fact, I used history as a big part of my promotions and getting people to come and visit here and guiding bus tours around the town. History is a very valuable part of our city, and I fully understand that. There are other ways to value that history in that area than preserving this one structure that's a danger to our city. We can use some of the materials to create a, an honorary, that's not what I mean, a smaller structure that honors the area. We could make replicas of the buildings. We don't need to save this immediate structure. Looking at historical preservation, I would suggest that you turn those efforts toward the 1892 building. Very architecturally interesting. Highway trailer building is not. It's a rectangle, and it's a very dangerous rectangle. So I ask you to support Alder Johnson's resolution and vote in favor of that. Thank you.
Thank you. And next registered to speak is Roger Springman, 812 Creedeman.
I have a packet I put on all the chairs. Does everyone have one? Please have one. All right, there we go.
Thank you.
So I spoke here about a year ago on this very topic of the blacksmith shop, and I'm doing it again today with a little different impact document in front of you. I'm going to read just a few of the major points I put in there, and you can follow along with me. My voice, owing to my sinus issue and my time here, prevents me from going over everything, but I want to just let you know that I've done a lot of research and thinking about this building. And what I want to do is collapse this into a simple narrative, so I'm going to just read the points that are under the value and the opportunity for your benefit, and then hopefully you can kind of see where I'm coming from and make some sense out of this. The blacksmith shop, I'm skipping the resource part, the opening section there, because you all know about the resource in general, and so I'm going to skip that. The value of the building is described as follows. It's an open floor plan, larger building, that has very usable features for the future. Common uses for our, for these large, open space floor plans are for event venues, retail centers, farmers' or public markets, public gathering spaces, dance slash exercise studios. So there are all uses that are common to these large, open spaces like the blacksmith shop. The important point is probably the next one. TID 8 will eventually create a large to very large neighborhood right on the Ahara River. It is entirely conceivable that at least 200 to as many as 400 people will live in this new neighborhood area sometime into the early 2020s. So that's 400 people, up to 400 people, that are going to be looking for a neighborhood center, someplace to call home, someplace to feel connected to Stoughton. Neighborhoods that function best are those that create social and cultural gathering places, and this attractiveness usually draws more people and keeps the neighborhood more sustainable. Places such as coffee shops, delis, taverns, bake shops, exercise centers, all anchor neighborhoods. The blacksmith shop is an ideal place to serve in this capacity. It's going to be creating its own neighborhood. There are neighborhoods around it. It's a mix, a very good logical connection place for TID 8 and all the neighborhoods that surround the immediate TID 8 area. So here's the opportunity that's before us over the next couple months. I've talked to Mark Ernst, who is our charrette architect, and he has informed me because of his work that he does statewide, that there are three developers that could have an interest in the blacksmith shop. And that's an important thing we've not been able to ascertain and work with so far through the RDA and through the RDA's recent activities. The RDA thus far has been unable to take time to separately market the blacksmith shop, thank you, and the initial RFP did not introduce the building as a building for separate reuse. So, we need a, we need a plan, we need to market it, and we already know based on Mark's help with, for us, that there are some developers interested in the building. Any effort to remove the highway trailer building complex buildings should not be allowed to affect the potential reuse of the blacksmith shop, and any adjacent deconstruction activities should account for essential stabilization and protection. And finally, the RDA should be given the freedom to conduct all necessary planning for the proposed TID 8. And the ability to consider necessary retail commercial needs and food hospitality needs ought to be put in our laps. That is why we're here. That is why we're supposed to help this town be all that it can be. The, I have a whole bunch of pictures there. I won't have time to go over them now because my time is out. I traveled extensively last fall through the South on a trip, and I have some pictures of my times down south in South Carolina and Tennessee. There's a lot of historical building reuse down there, and I provided a few examples for us to consider here in Stoughton. Thank you.
Thank you. And next registered to speak is Peggy Varigan, 225 North Monroe Street.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Peggy Varigan. I'm here tonight to express my opposition to our 40-2018 and my concern about the Facebook post, which was recently posted to a community Facebook group, where Alder Johnson provided content of a resolution to city council. This resolution, of course, only tells part of the story of what is happening at the site, yet once it's posted to social media, that doesn't matter. Social media often acts like an echo chamber, increasingly magnifying one point of view as it bounces around from different posters, and often is the vehicle for spreading misinformation and manipulating opinion. While undoubtedly, Facebook is a great vehicle for sharing information, it has also become, as we all well know, an effective vehicle to spread misinformation and generate fear. It is exceptionally inappropriate that social media is being used to create confusion and breed fear regarding the Moly Plough Company Building, which you call highway trailer building. Whether it was the intention of this post or not, spreading fear over social media does not reflect leadership and is counterproductive. The evaluation regarding redevelopment of the Wagon Works factory is part of a process that's been in motion for many months. The Landmarks Commission evaluated the building for local landmark status, and based on the evaluation criteria, the factory is local landmark eligible. It is also eligible for the State Register and the National Register of Historic Places. To say this building doesn't have historic significance is just silly. However, given that the question of landmarking the building was polarizing one segment of the community, in part due to misinformation spread through social media, the commission decided to defer recommendation to the council. Why? This was done specifically to allow the RDA the freedom to do its job and evaluate all of the components of the larger riverfront redevelopment without a fight about the factory distracting that work. The factory site has been secured, and the RDA and many others have been working very hard to evaluate the options and costs and come to a reasonable conclusion for the community as a whole. That work should be allowed to continue until it reaches its appropriate conclusion. This is a complex project without simplistic answers, and nowhere is it predetermined that all or nothing are the only options for this building. In short, there's a process going on, and it is the responsibility of elected officials to support that process regardless of their feelings about the building. Not following the process creates chaos, sows confusion, and generates fear. It interrupts the forward progress of the RDA, and especially disappointing erodes public confidence in elected officials. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And those are all that I have registered to speak. Are there others wishing to speak at the public comment period? Seeing none, we'll move on to the consent agenda. Our consent agenda this evening consists of the February 13, 2018 Common Council Minutes, Resolution 33-2018, which is a resolution authorizing and directing the proper city officials to issue operators licenses to various applicants. This evening, it's to Stephanie Downs. I would entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda?
She'll move.
Second.
There's a motion by Mieske, second by Truhl. Does any elder person wish to remove an item from that consent agenda? All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, no? Motion carries. Old business begins this evening with ordinance 7-2018 from our Public Safety Committee for a second reading this evening. Elder Person Truhl?
Thank you, Your Honor. The Public Safety Commission, our committee, brings forth ordinance 7-2018 and ordinance amending Section 70-1 and adopting 343.0301 pertaining to the installation of ignition interlock device, and move approval.
There's a motion by Truhl. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Duranzik. Elder Person Truhl?
Fundamentally, this just allows us, by adopting the standards, and again, the chief can correct me or get more information, but effectively allows us to actually be able, if directed, if someone who is directed to install an ignition interlock device, it gives us an opportunity to enforce it locally.
That is correct, and you summed it up very well.
Thank you. Comments or questions? All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, no? This ordinance carries. New business begins with Resolution 34 of 2018, comes, coming from our Finance Committee. Elder Person O'Connor?
Thank you, Mayor. Resolution 34-2018, resolution declaring intent to exercise special assessment powers for the 2018 Streets Project. Finance Committee met 5-0. I make motion to approve.
Motion by O'Connor.
Second.
Second by Truhl. Elder Person O'Connor?
This is just a resolution authorizing the, can't hear, street construction. Rodney, if you want to.
Yeah, I don't know if it's me tonight, but can I have someone in the, in the cable office turn up the volume, please?
Pull your mic closer.
Oh, maybe you need to turn up your volume.
Pull your mic closer.
Thank you.
This initiates the process to allow for us to prepare the engineers' estimates related to the cost that would be allocated to benefiting properties and to distribute them to the affected property owners, and then to establish a public hearing date for that to be heard once those become available.
Thank you. Comments or questions from older persons? Okay, seeing none, we'll vote by roll call.
Hirsch?
Aye.
Swadley?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Reeves?
Aye.
Mieske?
Aye.
Engelberger?
Aye.
Jensen?
Aye.
Truhl?
Aye.
O'Connor?
Aye.
Duranzik?
Aye.
Bartlett?
Aye.
That motion carries unanimously. Resolution 35 of 2018 comes from our Community Affairs Council Policy Committee. Elder Person Reeves?
Resolution 35-2018, resolution authorizing and directing the proper city officials to approve the responsive website upgrade proposal with Gov Office for the city website, and ISO move.
Second.
Motion by Reeves, second by Swadley. Elder Person Reeves?
John can probably answer specifics, but I believe we already have our website collaboration with Gov Office, correct?
That's correct.
And this is an upgrade, so maybe you can add some detail for that?
Yeah, we currently do have Gov Office housing our website right now. This is going to be an upgrade to the platform that they have, and also making it more intuitive, and also the information flow easier. So it's a little easier to find information.
Thank you. Questions or comments regarding this upgrade that I think we all believe is, it's time? All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, no? Motion carries. Ordinance 8 of 2018 comes from our Planning Commission for a first reading. Elder Person Truhl?
Thank you, Your Honor. Plan Commission brings forth ordinance 8-2018 and ordinance amending the zoning classifications for the city of Stoughton Public Works Facility at 2439 County Highway A and 1101 Collins Road in the city of Stoughton. Again, it's a first reading. It'll come back to us for approval in two weeks, but Plan Commission did recommend approval 6-0.
Thank you. Any questions this evening? We'll have an opportunity again in two weeks to discuss it further. Resolution 36 of 2018 comes from our Planning Commission. Elder Person Truhl?
Thank you, Your Honor. Plan Commission brings forth Resolution 36-2018, a resolution approving a certified survey map, Exhibit A, CSM Lot 1 and 2, to combine the properties for the city of Stoughton Public Works Facility at 2439 Highway, County Highway A and 1101 Collins Road, which are owned by the city of Stoughton. And I would move approval.
Second.
There's a motion by Truhl, second by Elder Person Engelberger. Elder Person Truhl?
Thank you, Your Honor. Again, there's a series of resolutions here, and again, the ordinance, all related to the development of our public works facility. This is just, again, a routine matter, but again, is working through our CSM process for our combined property out there. So I would encourage your support.
Great, thank you. Comments or questions from older persons this evening? All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, no? Motion carries. Resolution 37 of 2018 also comes from our Planning Commission. Elder Person Truhl?
Thank you, Your Honor. Plan Commission brings forth Resolution 37-2018, a resolution approving the conditional use permit to allow for more than 120% of the minimum required parking stalls for the city of Stoughton Public Works Facility at 2439 County Highway A, Dane County, Wisconsin. And move approval.
Motion by Elder Person Truhl, second by Engelberger. Elder Person?
Again, this is necessary because we do have a general guideline not allowing more than 120% of the normal parking. And because of the way our facility will be used out there, we needed to pass this as a part of this.
We're essentially authorizing three additional stalls.
I was going to say, not many more, but just a few. Comments or questions? All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, no? Motion carries. Resolution 38 of 2018 comes from our Planning Commission. Elder Person Truhl?
Thank you, Your Honor. Plan Commission brings forth Resolution 38-2018, a resolution approving an extraterritorial jurisdictional land division request by Dale Furseth for property located at 731 Bass Lake Road in the town of Rutland. Move approval.
Second.
Motion by Truhl, second by Engelberger. Elder Person Truhl?
Again, a routine request. The information and the maps are in your packet.
Any comments or questions? All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, no? Motion carries. Resolution 39 of 2018 also comes from our Planning Commission. Elder Person Truhl?
Thank you, Your Honor. Plan Commission brings forth Resolution 39-2018, authorizing and directing the proper city officials to amend the planning department fee schedule effective March 1, 2018, and providing for future inflation-based adjustments to the fee schedule. I'd move approval.
Second.
Motion by Truhl, second by Engelberger. Elder Person Truhl?
Once again, this is a relatively straightforward resolution that we have to pass to adjust our fee structure. We also talked about the ability to double charge or charge double for permits, building permits, and other things that may come if people don't pull the permits in advance of beginning of construction.
Thank you. Elder Person Duranzik?
Yeah, under 2B, they talk about rounding, and it doesn't follow the standard mathematical rule of rounding up and rounding down.
Under which part? I'm sorry. I am having a hard time hearing tonight.
Item 2B.
2B? Thank you.
2B, yeah. It doesn't follow the standard mathematical rule that you round down any number that's below 5, and you round up for any number that's above 5. That's a standard. And that's not what 2B is, is doing.
That's correct. If you want to change it, though, you can, but it's, right now, it's, it just rounds up. But if you want to change it to something else, you can, if the council wants to.
Well, I would assume that we would want to just follow the, the standard mathematical rules for consistency and predictability. So, can we just amend it to read that we would- rules for consistency and predictability, so can we just amend it to read that we would round up or down as per the standard mathematical rules?
Well, I guess I'll confess, I'm not familiar with the standard mathematical rules and whether, if we said that, I'm not sure if there's, where one would go to look for that standard mathematical rule.
Wouldn't say what you wanted to say.
Yeah, I mean.
I learned it in grade school. I mean, that's, you know, just kind of a standard that, you know, we learned.
Brett, I know what you're saying, that typically what we expect is that if it's 5, then you round up, and if it's less than 5, you round down. I don't know that it make, I would say it that way rather than make reference to a standard mathematical rule.
Well, then, I guess I would move to amend that if it's below 5, then you would round down, and if it's above 5, you would round up.
And I think you mean, like, one hundredth?
Yes, the one hundredth.
Yeah, below one, below five hundredths of a cent, you would round down, and if it's above 500, if it's 500 cents or higher, you would round up.
And I would round up, yeah.
That's your motion? Okay.
Second.
There's a motion by older person, Duranzik, second by.
Amendment.
Yep, yep. A motion to amend by older person, Duranzik, second by older person, Hirsch. Comments or discussion? All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, no?
No.
Let's, we'll do roll call.
No.
Hirsch?
Aye.
Swadley?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Reeves?
Aye.
Mieski?
Aye.
Engelberger?
Aye.
Jensen?
Nope.
Truul?
No.
O'Connor?
No.
Duranzik?
Aye.
That motion carries on a vote of 7 to 4. Back to the original motion on the floor regarding approval of Resolution 39, 2018. Further comments or discussion? Older person, Engelberger.
Thank you, Your Honor. I just wanted to address what Scott talked about with the, when people don't have, don't pull a permit for some reason, they just fail to pull a permit. We had that happen here in the last meeting or two, that was just, like, two or three in a row, people didn't pull permits when they were supposed to, and we didn't have that ordinance in place, and I feel it's necessary. Other communities have the same type of ordinance in place, and, you know, we've got some standards in this city, and we should follow them, and if people don't follow them, they should be penalized, so that's the reason that we're trying to bring this forward.
Thank you. Older person, Truul.
Thank you, Your Honor, and to Mike's point, I mean, we discussed this at plan, and frankly, we're frustrated at the fact that, as he indicated, we've had a number of fairly visible projects that have not always pulled the permits, and as he indicated, as a contractor myself, I was one of the folks who brought this to the point that in a lot of other communities, this is the way to do it, and I would encourage us to look, perhaps there may even be other fees and other things that we might want to think about, not just in terms of building permits, but again, if there's anything else that someone undertakes something before they get municipal approval, that we look at, perhaps doubling those fees to discourage that action, so I would encourage your support.
Thank you. Are there any further comments or questions? We'll vote by roll call.
Hirsch?
Aye.
Swadley?
Aye.
Forsyth? Oops, I'm sorry. Jensen?
Aye.
Um, Johnson?
Is that Jensen or Johnson?
It was Jensen.
Yeah, aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Reeves?
Aye.
Mieski?
Aye.
Truul?
Aye.
O'Connor?
Aye.
Bartlett?
Aye.
Duranzik?
Aye.
How about me?
You missed one.
You don't count.
Engelberger.
I'm still on.
Ten minutes, Mike, you're not, ten minutes, that's all we got left.
Trying to get rid of me already, huh?
I think she was rotating, and you were just at the top. You got rotated right off.
You get two on the next item.
All right, Resolution 40 of 2018, comes from older person, Jensen.
Thank you, Your Honor. With your permission, I'd like to read the entire resolution.
Make sure.
Yeah, read loudly, please, there we go.
Resolution R 40, 2018, authorizing directing proper city officials.
Yeah, but they can't hear you, I'm sorry, can you, you might have to use your outside voice.
Outside voice.
Yeah, as only a grandma would say it, use your outside voice.
Resolution R 40, 2018, authorizing directing the proper city officials to rescind the demolition moratorium and direct redevelopment authority to start demolition process on highway trailer complex, including the attached blacksmith shop, whereas former Landmarks Commission member Stephen Marple authorized, or authored the engineering study dated July 12, 2017, in which the highway trailer complex was designated a fall hazard, and whereas the City of Stoughton Chief Police, Fire, and EMS Director have determined the highway trailer complex a safety hazard, and all signed a do not enter order, and the city, whereas the City of Stoughton Insurance Carrier, City's Village Mutual Insurance Company, recommended the closing of East Soul Street and fencing off of the highway trailer complex, which has been closed and fenced now for more than six months, and whereas the closing of East Soul Street, a through street to many homes and businesses, has inconvenienced the neighborhood residents, pedestrians, motorists, and the city's first responders, and whereas the highway trailer complex is both a blight on the City of Stoughton and a safety hazard, it is in the best interest of the residents of the City of Stoughton that a clear direction be given to the redevelopment authority to demolish the highway trailer complex as soon as possible, and make sure, make the site ready for development to ensure the safety of the citizens, and I would so move.
It's a motion by Jensen, is there a second?
Second.
Second by O'Connor. Older person, Jensen.
Thank you, Your Honor. Heard a lot of discussion here on this, talking about history and everything, and you all know, I mean, I was in favor of keeping the blacksmith shop, up until we got that study on, in July. That study changed everything, it told us that we needed to take it down, period. We did put the fence up, but that is not securing it, it's only, it's only a Band-Aid on a rather large wound. People are still getting in there, I know for a fact that people are getting in there because my grandson got in there. He was reprimanded for that, by the way. It's something, it's really just, it's a black and white question. Do we want to take it down, or don't we? Do we value the building more than we value human life? That's it.
Thank you. Comments or questions?
I have a question.
Older person, Duranzik.
Yeah, I would like some clarity on the memo from Veerbecker. Do we know that this is a firm quote from Veerbecker, the, for the demolition and the abatement at 740,000?
Scott, maybe can you speak to that as chair?
Sure. Within the packet, there is a memorandum addressed to myself, to Gary Becker and Rodney Shield, from Gary Blazek, who is our consultant that we've been working with at Veerbecker. Gary has been overseeing the entire demolition process for the rest of the mill fab, buildings that have been taken, that are in the process of being taken down. Veerbecker provided the original specifications and the like for that project. We had gone at the, one of the challenges that I was given last summer, fall, whatever it was, we had the committee, the whole, one of the questions that I was directed was to try and get an updated estimate on what the demolition would cost to take the entire building, and also what it would cost if we saved the blacksmith building. With that in mind, we asked Earth Construction, the contractor that is currently working, to provide us with a proposal, effectively, and for the demolition of both the carpet warehouse building and the highway trailer building, and that memo is in your packet. The carpet warehouse proposal was for, ultimately, was for $58,000, a little over $58,000. We have accepted that as a change order to the demo contract, and then you see that Earth Construction estimated that the demo and asbestos abatement to take down the entire building will cost $740,000. Cost includes the asbestos abatement, removal and disposal of all building materials, removal of the concrete, flatwork, and footings, backfill with crushed materials, topsoil, and seeded the affected areas. They indicate that the credit for saving the blacksmith building would be $40,000, so effectively, taking down the balance of it would be $700,000.
Thank you. I have Council President Swadley, and then Hirsch, and then Duranzik.
Thank you, Your Honor. So I posted a couple of questions to Tammy, actually the same weekend that Greg drafted the resolution, as far as how we would go about, you know, paying for the cost of removal of the buildings, so I'd like to have her give us an opportunity to answer those questions. And then I had a couple other questions for Attorney Dregney, and I don't know if you are able to provide answers for them as well, but.
Okay, so let's let Tammy, when is time?
Sure.
As we'll get lost.
Well, we were talking about the $740,000 figure, that would be the cost to demolish the building, and I'm not certain if there'd be any site remediation or anything involved. Today, I did speak to Joe Murray, and he said that if we were to reach a decision this evening to move forward, that it would be possible to include with our current proposed borrowing, that it would probably amount to about $9.40 per $100,000 value, and that the rate would come in lower than the state trust fund. The state trust fund currently would be at a rate, interest rate of 4%, and they could do much better with promissory notes for that amount of 800,000. Currently, the other options, the only other option that I can think of is that we would change the current borrowing, or, you know, there's really no other funding source at this time, the reserve account, and you don't want to tap into that, you want to leave that be, so.
So then my follow-up to you would be, is if we borrow the money to demolish a building, will we still be within our borrowing policy?
Yes, according to the latest estimate that I came up with, we would be at, for 2018, we had proposed to go out and borrow the $13 million at the end of the year, we'd be at about 33,797, which is about 3.17% of our debt burden. That leaves us approximately 8,823,000 left to reach that 4% maximum, and currently, the state has a 5% maximum, so there's even additional flux there. In the past, Moody's, when we've gone through ratings, when we borrowed funds, they've been happy with the level of payment that we, the City of Stoughton is very aggressive at paying off its debt, so we would continue to do so.
Okay, and just to follow up on that, one of the concerns I've expressed in the past involved our debt service policy, and I've been assured that on some future borrowing that may occur regarding TIF, as long as we use a pay-go TIF, that does not go against our borrowing, is that accurate?
That's my understanding, it wouldn't go against the city's direct debt burden ratio.
So based on what I've learned, I think the money is there for us to borrow to do whatever we decide to do tonight, if we choose to go down that road.
That is correct.
Thank you.
You had another question, though, before we move? Did you have a question?
For Attorney Dregney? So I sent Attorney Dregney a couple of questions. First of all, you know, I want to commend Greg for stepping up and showing leadership on this. I think it's great when council members feel empowered to do so, so thanks for doing that. My question regarding the resolution is, can the city council direct the redevelopment authority? Can we tell them what to do? Do we have the authority to do that?
Not exactly, no. So this resolution says two things in the relevant language, it says lift the demolition moratorium, and then the next clause is direct the redevelopment authority to start the process. So, I mean, you could, you could, you could request, but you can't order them to do it, it's, the property is titled to the redevelopment authority, it's, they have the authority to make that decision now. Of course, some of the decisions that the redevelopment authority might make are subject to council approval later, but I believe that if this resolution were adopted, the redevelopment authority would still have the responsibility to decide what to do, they would not be required to proceed with demolition if they decided that's not what they want to do.
So really, the only thing we can do as a body is authorize the money for the demolition?
And lift the moratorium.
Well, to me, that's a separate issue, but we can talk about that later. So my second question was, is can we simply make this part of a change order for the work that's currently being done, or does this need to be bid out?
So it could be handled as a change order legally. I've come to the conclusion, and we had to look at this when we looked at the procedural requirements related to the mill fab property, and whether that had to be bid or not, and our conclusion was, it's not legally required that you publicly bid demolition, so it could be done as a change order. If it were approached as a change order, you'd still have the problem that you'd have to resolve of determining, of negotiating the terms of that change order, and determining whether you're satisfied with the price that you're paying, and I think you'd have to develop some kind of specifications for the work that you'd be doing, so, but it could legally be done as a change order.
So to follow up on that, if we made a decision to do a change order, would that be consistent with city policy? Has anybody looked at that?
Well, what my answer was based on just Wisconsin law governing public bidding, when you have to publicly bid or not. I'm not aware of any city policy that bears on this, I've not looked into it, though.
I believe we have a city policy regarding bidding and borrowing, don't we?
Yes, we do.
Would it be applicable to the RDA?
I haven't seen the policy, so I'm not really in a position to comment, I don't know.
So maybe that's something we can come back to, if somebody can find that during the course of the discussion.
Tammy had a comment to make.
In your packet this evening, you should have also received a copy of some meeting minutes from the RDA back in March of 2017, where they voted 5 to 1 to demolish the highway trailer building. There's also something from September 20, where they were also looking at, when they were going out to try and get quotes for what it would cost to remove the building, as well as an option, an alternate to keep the blacksmith shop, so those are in your packet.
What about the Marple report?
I'm sorry?
The report from the consultant that said the building was a danger?
Right.
Where is it in the packet?
Okay, I don't believe that that was put in the packet. The Marple report, I don't believe that was.
No, that was not put in this evening's packet.
Was not put in this evening's packet.
It's out online, though, on the website, I know that.
Don't you think it's kind of a critical thing to be, considering we're talking about this building?
Well, I can also say we didn't get a request to put it in the packet, I guess, I had assumed, I had hoped that folks still had it from when it was handed out the last time.
It's on the RDA's site, under our study.
It's on the RDA's site, it's on the council.
It's in there.
It's in the website, in different locations. Older person, Hirsch, Duranzik, and then Truul.
Thank you. I have a number of things to get over, because I think if we're going to make a decision on this, I think the council actually needs to know some facts, and what things actually cost, so I've been working with Gary Becker, who isn't here tonight, to actually pull together some actual costs of what things are actually going to do, and you guys all got this spreadsheet. The other thing is, there is another study in here that Gary sent me from True North that actually talks about other estimates for taking down the highway trailer building, and also for the abatement, for the internal kind of remediation, getting rid of all the bad stuff in the building, so that's in this report in there, so, and this was. So, and this was pretty explicit of what it all entailed, so start off with just the abatement for the site, getting rid of all the, okay, all the asbestos and everything was $165,000, and then anywhere, if you took down the whole site, it's anywhere from $735,000 to $909,000, depending on if you get things, debris taken away of, all the hauling, and so there is kind of a range of costs. The second thing, what I did is, I put together different options, and thank you, Rodney, for putting that up there. Option one, if you took down the whole Highway Trailer Building, again, the range in costs based on the estimates are 735 to 909. Are there grants available? Yes, there are grants. There's a possibility of getting another WDNR SAID grant for $150,000, and then what, here you can have that. What Gary came up with today, and I'm sorry this wasn't in your packet, but because this resolution came up quick, and these are the information that RDA's been trying to pull together, you've guys now made us rush to try to grab information for you, so you can make an informed and decision based on facts and not emotion. The other grant is idle sites program. The SAID grant is based on budgets. We can't apply for that until the Milfab is actually done. We've paid for it, because we also have a SAID grant right now for the Milfab, and so we came and applied for that $150,000 until all that paperwork is done, and so that then has to go through the state, and once the state's budget is complete, last, should be done in July, but last year was the end of October, so we have no idea when that money would be awarded. The idle sites program, the money is available now, but, and that can be used on both entire demo and also kind of partial demo, but we'd have to figure out, I mean, there's some ways that Gary would have to figure out how to write that grant, because it would have to cover some of the Milfab stuff, too. So, along with that, so those grants, and what Gary kept on saying is that we, if we're putting together what Scott had talked about, this TID number eight, the last thing we want to do is have a major expense as we're trying to go through this TID program. We cannot add, borrow, and take things down as we're trying to develop this site plan and have something gone. He suggests if we go forward and vote it, to take either all a part of it down, that based on his estimates, by the time we get bids, by the time we get specs, by the time we get grants in line, it's going to match up by the time we actually get the TID approved, which will be hopefully August through September, October time, and then demo could start. So there is no way that even if you approve demolition tonight, demolition will not start for at least six to nine months. So that's, that's just a reality. And so if you, you know, this is, again, what we've been putting together for RDA. I, you know, so I gave you a fourth option, which you can't see out there, just to start brainstorming. If public safety is their number one issue, it seems that was the motivator for Alderperson Jensen, and from the Marple studies, Alderperson Mijesci says it's not in this packet, but I did put in kind of the site part in your little packet. Unfortunately, Marple did a really questionable job when he puts this false zone in. He doesn't tell which buildings are actually the problem. In his presentation, he was talking mainly about building number E, possibly F and G, not D or C. And so my kind of thought is, if we're really concerned about getting the South Road open and taking away the biggest kind of fall part, can we get an estimate just to take down building E, F, and G? Then that might be a lower cost. Again, this, we don't know, because, you know, we haven't had time to explore this opportunity. Can we get this done quicker? Can we get the road open quicker? Can we shore up the wall on building D, because that's the shared wall with E? Can we get things done quicker if we get, you know, go that route? Then what happens is you create other options and opportunities. You get rid of what Alderperson Jensen's number one concern is, is public safety and opening up the road. We can possibly get that done sooner as opposed to six to nine months. We save money, and so that's the options. And if we're going forward with the RDA, and as Scott knows, we want a phase in this development, and the first phase that we really want to do is probably by the riverfront, not spend over a million dollars taking down a Highway Trailer Building. And so I think, you know, this gives us more opportunity to be smart about how we use our limited resources, still address a good portion of the public safety, at least with respect to right on South Street. Doesn't take them all down, but according to Chief Leck and everything from that meeting that we had with the Council of the Hole, he says that he does walk the perimeter, as policemen do, and so did Rodney. So they assured us that the fencing is adequate, and that, you know, even though people might get in, I think we've got to look at the whole thing. And also, you have to look at, if we're borrowing more, that also means taxes go up, and I don't know if we really want to put that, you know, seeing as how we're already borrowing a lot this year. So I'm just throwing out, giving you guys a number so you can make informed decisions, and hopefully we can have kind of discussions based on factual information. And, I mean, I guess I would propose, if we wanted to, to look at it, option four is actually get a committee of the hole and get an expert in, and talk about what the options are with how they could take those buildings down, and what would be the cost, or RDA could find that out. I mean, it's just an option. I'm just trying to think outside the box as opposed to, you know, the black and white scenarios that were posed before.
If I could, I understand what you're saying, but I wanted to have, I know Rodney has his staff monitoring the site, as does Chief Leck. Is building D also, or what are your concerns regarding building D on this picture? I don't know if you...
Building D, according to Marple, was...
Right, not, maybe not the fall zone, but I was curious if they had other safety hazards in that building that they were, that they're aware of.
Not entry issues, I don't believe there's...
Not, I'm sorry?
I'm sorry, I don't believe that there's entry occurring into that.
Okay, thank you.
Again, as I stated at the Committee of the Hole, there is no guarantee that nobody's getting into these. We've taken preventative measures to barricade windows and doors, and installed the fence as another precautionary measure, but as the chief described, active monitoring of the site is not occurring on a 24/7 basis down there, so there could be that occurring. But I'm not aware of any entry going into D at this point.
Thank you. And Chief?
I concur with what Rodney was saying. I mean, we monitor it when we can, as time permits, but there is no 24/7 monitoring occurring right now, so...
Thank you. I just wanted to be sure that we talked about all the buildings, Regina, thanks. I had Duranzik, Truel, and then O'Connor.
Yeah, I have a question for Rodney. What other associated costs would we incur if we demolished? Because I assume we have to hire an engineer to oversee the project, and so that would be an associated cost. Is there something else?
I don't know what remediation, obviously, there's generally a consulting firm that would oversee or participate. Pure demolition might not be as necessary, but the remediation measures, there would have to be consultants that observe that remediation effort that would occur for some of the contamination on the site. I've not been involved specifically in developing any specifications for any of the demolition or remediation of the site here, so there might be some consulting services that would be appropriate.
Scott, would you have some ideas?
I have all kinds of answers whenever I get my chance, so I just keep asking the questions, and I'm writing them all down. So what else do you have? Do you have other questions, Denise?
I was just wondering, you know, the figure we got is just for demolition, and I'm just wondering if we need, we would need to include additional funding for engineering oversight for, you know, like either abatement or demolition. I don't know.
My suggestion would be, we can, we provide a change order also for this move forward to Veerbecker, who has been acting that capacity for us. Gary Blazek is our consultant, we have been paying him to oversee, he did create the original specifications, and I would anticipate if this motion were to move forward, or if the building were to be, if we did take action to remove all a part of it, we would continue to use Veerbecker. I would, my best guess, based on some initial conversations, we probably would be looking at perhaps about another $25,000 in consulting fees...
Okay.
...as a part of it. It would also depend, again, whether it is being done as an extension of the current work, or whether it would be done at a later time. So, again, right now, the proposal that we received for, from Earth assumes that they would be able to stay on-site and stay mobilized...
Okay.
...which is another element of this. And so if this is, if we wait past, later on this spring, when they finish up with the Carpet Warehouse Building, I would venture to guess that the $740,000 number will go up, at least by some mobilization factor. I wouldn't expect that to be, you know, hundreds of thousands of dollars or things like that, but I would expect that it would likely be, you know, perhaps more in the order of, you know, $10,000 or something to happen to come back as a part of it. But right now, the way they estimated it, they actually used their, the same cost per cubic foot of demolition that they bid us to take down the Milfab Buildings, is that same rate is what they gave us to take down the Carpet Warehouse Building, and I believe that that is the same rate that they are using for the purposes of giving us the $740,000 proposal.
Thank you. That's what I wanted to know.
Okay. Alderperson, Truel.
Thank you, Your Honor. A number of, let me try and catch some of the other questions that came up. First, from the standpoint of directing the RDA, frankly, the RDA is looking for direction, ultimately. So I don't think the issue of whether council tells us at RDA, I don't see that as a problem. I think ultimately, from the RDA's perspective, we've been talking about whatever our next moves are, the importance of getting council buy-in, and that's why I'm encouraging folks to come to some of our future meetings, so that you have an opportunity to hear what we're hearing, and to express your interest. Ultimately, it is a financial decision, so it will come back to council. So council is the checkbook for us on this. So I don't think there's an issue, again, I think frankly, the RDA is looking, and we have talked about this, both in our recent meetings, when we were talking about the possibility of doing some type of visioning exercise, and also as a part of the discussion on the TID process. Gary Becker pointed out the fact that the first and most important decision is, what are we doing with the Highway Trailer Building? Because it does affect the rest of his ramifications, the rest of his financial projections and the like for the site. So it is important for council, whether we do it this evening, or with the next council, or whatever, eventually, this body, the RDA is going to be looking to this body to make recommendations. I believe in terms of the question about whether we could handle it as a change order, hopefully I answered part of it. The way this was proposed, it would be as a change order, and I believe the RDA can, could exercise it. The one financial question that I have for Tammy as a part of that is, I also believe that the moment we were to take the building down, currently, we have a purchase price of $150,000 on it, and the, with the Willian family, and we had 10 years, up to 10 years before we had to pay that, or upon the start of a new project. So the question, the borrowing is, as a part of your trigger, or part of your number, are you assuming the $150,000 that we will have to pay right now, if we were to take this down?
You've already borrowed the money last year.
Yeah.
So it is available, it is there for whatever time this occurs.
Okay. So just an FYI from that standpoint, so that is, that would be, I would believe that would be triggered as a part of our current agreement with them. In terms of the demolition schedule, as Regina indicated, I did want, I'm glad you corrected it, too, Regina, some of the grants, again, we need to be eligible for, to be able to reapply to the state for the grant we received for $150,000, we do have to close this project out. As she correctly indicated, then, if we were to go back and do that, we would be looking at a fall, most likely a fall schedule. The resolution, as I understand it, though, is actually putting forth the potential cost of 740, which, again, if we were not trying to obtain the grants, would allow a demo schedule to continue, and frankly, happen right after the Carpet Warehouse Building, and allow them to roll into it. So again, there's a bit of a trade-off there, because I indicated there is likely going to be, if at some time in the future, we were to take up the action to do the demolition for all or part of it, I believe that there will be some added costs beyond the numbers we're talking about, and that would be being offset by potential grants that we might be able to get. So I think frankly, the, air quotes here, the worst case, is actually what Greg has identified as a part of this. So, you know, the $740,000, $150,000 number, if we do it right now, but again, if we go forward, again, the cost might go higher, but we may be able to obtain some other grants if we're taking the whole thing. With regard to the specific buildings and the status, I believe Mr. Marple did indicate that building E is the building that has the wood frame structure in it that is failing. Again, it is that roof that is the most...
The E or the D?
I believe it's building E, like Edward.
E, yeah.
And it is not, he, I, as my recollection is, he did not say that was the same case for building D, but, and given some aerial photos that we've seen very recently, again, I believe that the roof structure in, I'm confident that it's in E, and I believe we're also seeing roof failure in building F. So, again, to that point about which buildings are most imminent danger, it is those buildings. The other building that has been generally discussed about being in bad shape is effectively building B, like Boy. It's the add-on lean-to that was added on to the Blacksmith Building as well. So building G, I believe was originally a, the power plant building, it's a building that no one, none of the developers I've ever talked to have ever expressed a desire in keeping, but I don't believe that it has a huge risk from that standpoint. Mr. Marple did express a concern about the residents on Seventh Street literally playing ball against the east side of building A, and so that was another one of those discussions that he was concerned about, not really knowing, not really expressing an imminent concern on the overall structural integrity of building A. But you may recall, some of the pictures that were shown showed the parapet walls and some of the other bricks up high that were starting to fall out. Mr. Marple also indicated that on the other end of the discussion, he said that the buildings are in such dis, in such bad shape that they would be easy to fix, which, again, sounds kind of counterintuitive, but what we're seeing, I believe, in terms of what city staff has been administering to and keeping track of, is some of these buildings were multiple layers of masonry and brick and the like, and so it's the outer skin that effectively moisture is getting in, and is freezing, and causing some of those bricks to pop and the like, and so that's definitely some of the concerns that we have, you know, kind of on a day-to-day basis with some of the routine issues that are happening with the buildings. So, I apologize, I think that's it for the questions I had, you know, that you folks had asked, trying to get any information, again.
Great, thanks, Scott. Alderperson, O'Connor.
Thank you, Mary. You asked my question about building D, but maybe for Greg, if building D were, would Building D were, would remain, is the only concern entry into the building, or is it also, would it remain fenced off and closing the street as well?
Well, from my understanding, the fencing is a result of the potential fall zone, and that's why we have the fencing into the street. So, in not having, I don't know which building exactly is A or D, but, yeah, probably, you know, quite honestly, from what we were told in the report, it's that whole frontal area on South, East-South Street that poses the potential threat. And that's how we reacted accordingly, and of course, CivMCC did a review as well of what actions we've taken, and that thus where, that's where we're at with the closing of the street and protecting that potential fall zone.
Thank you. Scott, did you want to speak to that?
Just one more quick, a quick one. Again, current situation, because of AJ contacting our insurance carrier, we have a no-entry rule right now, and AJ reaffirmed that within the last day. The RDA had asked a question about how is it possible for us to take developers or other people that might be interested through the buildings, and AJ just reconfirmed with the insurance company that at this point, that's not going to be allowed. The insurance company effectively said, "Use the pictures and use some of the other things that we have." So, to Greg's point about getting our insurance carrier involved, I believe that's where we are from a risk management standpoint.
Correct. Thank you. Council President Swadley.
Thank you, Your Honor. Just to follow up on that, Scott. So, if we move forward on this, we have to get into the building to do abatement? So, how is CivMCC feeling about that?
I think, I don't know that they've been asked the question directly. I know we had had discussions, some discussions with the demolition contractor about things that would happen. Literally, there may be some cases where they could use equipment to pull walls down, for eight, you know, much as they did with the Milfab building. There were a couple of sections in the middle that, once they got into it and started removing parts of it, they found additional material that needed to be abated, and so they used various equipment to pull some of those upper levels down, and then they were cleaned up on-site. So, there are ways to deal with it, again, given the fact, if we're talking about mass demolition, and again, whether it's the full building, or it's keeping the blacksmith shop.
Sure. Okay, and then, the other question I have for you and Chief Leck, other than the bricks falling off of Building A, which is the blacksmith shop, are there any other safety hazards that you've witnessed or know about associated with that building? Because Alderperson Jensen mentioned that in the Marpol report, although I don't see anything in there referring to that building specifically. Are you aware of any safety hazards with that building, the blacksmith shop?
Well, again, not aware of any in that particular building, but we have considered the whole complex as part of our no-entry, and that's on the recommendation of our insurance carrier as well, so-
So, would that change if we left the blacksmith shop there?
I guess that depends on what you do to shore walls up, and how stable the building would be, and whether it passes, you know, some sort of an engineering inspection.
To that point, Mr. Marpol did indicate that that building is at risk, and so that's where he indicated the fall zone on Seventh Street. So, no matter what happens to the South Street buildings, if the blacksmith building stays up until some future plan is done, he's indicated that that building does have that fall zone halfway into Seventh Street, and that would need to stay up.
The blacksmith shop could fall into Seventh Street?
Yes. In terms of the brick and some of the things on-
The bricks. I mean, you gotta be-
It's not the whole building?
No, no, not at all.
When people say the fall zone, let's be explicit. It's bricks falling in. It's the E and F that there is, with the weight of the water, he was concerned about that having more of a fall zone. And the reason why D was put in there is because D and E share a wall, and it might compromise D's wall. So, you know-
I think we need to clarify that for Mr. Marpol, because that's not what our CivMCC company, carrier is understanding, according to the report. Well, he's got on the picture that we're looking at, the fall zone, I'm going to lose all my papers. He has the fall zone here.
Nowhere in the report does it say what is his definition of a fall zone.
That's why I'm asking. It's going to have to be clarified.
Steve did have it as a part of his recommendation. He was the one who actually put, gave us these kind of dimensions.
I know, but he didn't say that the building is in imminent danger of falling down.
Correct. The discussion he had-
That's what I'm saying.
The discussion he indicated was that the buildings that are most in danger from a structural standpoint, and again, that as opposed to having, you know, potentially, again, bricks and other pieces fall off, Buildings E and F were, he was concerned, specifically Building E, because of the failing roof, the wood structure that was inside was most at risk from a pure structural standpoint. He actually said, you may recall, he said, "The building is actually more likely to fall into itself than to the outside." Having said that, he also indicated that because of his licensing and everything else, he had to make us aware that it was possible to go the other way. And so, that was the result of kind of how he created the fall zone. We then provided, to the best of my knowledge, the city then provided that information to our insurance carrier, and that's when they came back and determined these zones.
No, I agree. I just want to clarify one, that he said, "Fall zone with respect to the blacksmith." There's more of the kids bouncing balls off and getting hit by a random brick, as opposed to the whole wall falling down.
Correct.
Okay. And then, one final thing on the, if we can move forward on this, is there a way we can change the schedule and start working on D, E, F, and G instead of the other Milfab buildings? Will the Earth Construction have enough flexibility to do that?
We would need to talk to them. They're clearly on schedule right now, and again, I don't know, for the general public and for council. The main Milfab building is about, I believe, over half taken down. The two pre-engineered metal buildings that were out there on-site have been removed. His, their plan for us was that by the end of March, they believed they would materially be done with the Milfab complex, and again, it was multiple buildings down there. The plan at this point was to then move up to the carpet warehouse building and take that down. There's nothing imminent about that building, other than it was, again, the most economical time to take that down since we purchased it. I would believe if directed, we, if directed by council, RDA would certainly talk to Earth about sequencing this complex and figure out what made the most sense, you know, based on the structural integrity and which buildings should be taken down first. And, again, if we directed them to try and do everything we could to do any removal along South Street, I'm sure they would do that. But, again, given the fact that the original proposal was, for the Milfab complex, was about three months in total, I don't recall ever asking Earth what their timeline would be for this building, but I would anticipate it would be probably similar, if not perhaps even a little bit longer.
Okay, so, what I'd like to do then is, I would like to make an amendment to the motion, and what I would like to do is basically take out the moratorium part, any reference to the blacksmith shop, and we can argue that separately as part of the amendment. So, basically, what we would be doing on the motion, if my amendment passed, would we only be voting to approve the money needed to take down Buildings B through G?
Do you want to put that into an amendment for me? You're making a motion to amend and then finish that sentence.
So, the motion to amend would be, I mean, this is a long resolution, so basically, when you start on the top, you would authorize and direct to proper city officials. So, I would amend, I would take out the rescind the demolition moratorium.
Okay, let us write that one down.
So, you can maybe draw a line through that, and then I would say, "And recommend..."
I'm sorry. You're asking Holly to type off the facts.
Okay.
No.
Do you have a way to copy that and make it a working draft?
Holly.
Point of order, I mean, or point of information. Again, Tammy, as I understand, I mean, what you, is it not what you're basically saying is, take exactly the same resolution that Alderman Jensen is proposing, but just remove the actual demolition, so we would have, we would remove the 40,000, potential $40,000 cost, and-
And the moratorium and the blacksmith?
Right.
That's pretty simple. You should be able to strike those lines.
Right, but we want to get it written down, so that we don't-
Right, I'm just saying, from a standpoint of looking at his-
Resolution.
Resolution, it really would be a case where you would be retaining the blacksmith building.
Right. For now, we can talk about that in the future. So, just let me know what you need from me, or if you're ready, or what you want me to do. Okay, so, it'll say, authorize and direct to property, proper city officials to recommend to the redevelopment authority, or to authorize the funds needed for the redevelopment authority to begin the demolition process for the highway trailer buildings B through G. That's as simple as I can put it.
Authorize the funds needed. Say that again.
I'll second that motion.
Authorize the funds-
Let's get it written down first.
Authorize the funds needed for the RDA to begin the demolition process for the highway trailer buildings B through G.
Can I just ask for clarification? So, you were, at this point, you're up in the title section?
Yes, I'm up in the title.
Okay, so when that's done, then you should move down to the actual resolution, the last paragraph?
Exactly.
And just make that excluding. That's where I was going with it. It's effective, your motion is, now be it for a resolve, says the council in stone, immediately lift the demolition moratorium. Again, you can decide what you want to do with that, but direct the RDA to start the process of demolition of the highway trailer complex, and rather than saying, "Including the blacksmith shop," to say, "Excluding."
You could do that as well. That's fine.
It's the simplest way.
Did you catch that, Holly?
No, wait, one second.
Scott has-
So, we're tearing down this? Holly's trying to get down something written. Okay, okay, let's, let's call, let's pull things together. Holly would like to read, but she has written down as, one second, Drake, no, one second. Holly wants to read what she's got first. That way we know what she's going.
Let's get that right, and then see if we get a second, and then we'll, I'll explain it, and then we can go around the table.
Yep.
So, there is a motion to amend the motion, and it would be to authorize and direct the proper city officials to authorize the funds needed for the redevelopment authority to start the demolition process for the highway trailer buildings B through G.
That's fine.
Scott, is that what you?
Whatever you want to do.
That'll work.
Whichever is easiest. The direction, that's why I was trying to clarify. Like I said, in the actual resolution, if we just look across what's there, it's basically, like I said, the net effect is, the last, the last part of that sentence says, "Excluding the blacksmith shop," because you really are authorizing us to do-
That's fine, too.
-everything else.
I like that better than letters.
If it's cleaner, go with it.
Okay, so, now what she's talking-
Now, we got to go back.
Sorry.
Now, we're talking about, so-
Leave it all there, except for, no, we're still up here, Matt. We're still at the top. We're still at the top.
But what he wants is to authorize, are we talking about authorizing? I'm going to step back.
Authorizing, authorizing the money, basically, the funding for, to the RDA to start the demolition process for the highway trailer complex, excluding the blacksmith shop. And then, as we move down, the rest of it looks fine enough, until we get to-
Should we just stick at the top, and then, because I know there's lots of conversation going around, we need to stick with that one. Sure.
This resolution that you're discussing right now, we've already voted on this exact same thing in September. Can we please look at that to make sure that we're not voting on the exact same thing, same issue?
Our rules allow us to vote on the same thing after 30 days.
Yep, absolutely.
That's in our rules.
Absolutely. Okay. Now, I'm going to have Holly read the question. I know that Alderperson Jensen had a comment, and then I'm going to go down. I saw Jensen Engelberger-
So, we still need to change part of the whereas, or the not therefore, and all that?
But we're still working on the one motion first.
Well, it's all part of the resolution.
Yep, but you wanted to, you made a motion.
Was there a second?
So, let's stick with that one.
I seconded it.
Denise seconded it? Okay, so, you want me to explain myself?
Go with your hands, read, okay. Okay, Swadley, and then we're going to go with the hands I saw in the room.
Before Tim goes through that, if I could just say, are you going to make that a friendly? If you make it a friendly, I'll accept it.
There is no such thing as a friendly.
Sure there is.
Yeah, I wouldn't, I wouldn't go there. I wouldn't go there. Okay.
I would have, though.
Council President Swadley.
So, so basically, back in September, we had a committee of the whole meeting, and at the committee of the whole meeting, the council recommended to the RDA that we go out and bid it out for demolition. I think it was an eight to three vote, the minutes are in the packet. So, we gave direction to the RDA back then. The RDA followed through, took their job. Unfortunately, it takes four months to get an estimate back, so it's really not on us. It's not on the RDA. They did what we asked them to do. They did it. It takes time. And one of the unfortunate things about this whole discussion has been that many people have accused the city council of delaying the process, and I really don't think that was anybody's intent here. And what I'd like to do is vote on this, move forward, and get this thing done. Now, the reason we put the moratorium on the highway trailer building was to give the Landmarks Commission time to update the ordinances, which the Landmarks Commission has done, and Attorney Dregni is in the process of reviewing them, and will be approving them at a later date. That's why the moratorium was put on the buildings, and then at one point, at the council meeting, we were asked by the RDA to lift the moratorium on the highway trailer buildings, the ones that we're talking about removing tonight, except for the blacksmith shop, in order for the master developer to hold the charrette. They were not willing to hold the charrette. While there was a moratorium on the highway trailer building, the council listened to the RDA. We removed that part of the moratorium. They held the charrette. So, the reason I didn't include the blacksmith shop in the resolution, as Greg did, is because I don't believe that building, as far as I know, serves any immediate danger to the residents or people in our community. And, quite frankly, we can decide to tear that building down anytime we want, if we so choose, but I don't think we should do that until we get Attorney Dregni's review of the updated ordinance, and that ordinance is passed by the city council. Other reasons for not doing the blacksmith shop now is, we don't know what's underneath these buildings. Once we remove a building, we have to do soil samples, and hopefully, the cost won't be that much, but it's an unknown. And my guess would be, if we find contamination under the highway trailer building, we'll probably find as much or even more if we tear down the blacksmith shop, because there was a foundry in there, and who knows what kind of melting they were doing in that. I go to many factories in my work. I see what they do, and I'm not an expert in that area, but I'm really concerned about the potential cleanup cost, and who would foot the bill for that? And I don't know if there's enough grants in the world to clean that up, so I don't see any reason to disturb that building at this point. That's not to say that I'm not opening, I'm not opening a revisit that at a future date. If we find that we tear down the other structures, and the blacksmith shop just isn't physically capable of continuing, we certainly have other buildings, including the Public Works building, the old building down there, that at some point, we're going to remove anyway, so I think we can have that discussion at a later date. I also want to give a future developer some flexibility and some options. We heard tonight that there may be some potential interest in somebody developing the blacksmith shop, and if they do, that would be more cost-effective for us. I'm really concerned about how much money we've been borrowing the last couple of years. We've raised our policy in order to cover our costs. Don't want to have to raise it again, so I think we always have to keep in mind, when we start these projects, how much money we're borrowing. So, that's why I made the resolution. Others can certainly, you know, weigh in on their thoughts, and, you know, pros or cons, but I think we need to move forward and make a decision.
Alderperson Jensen, did you have?
Thank you.
I have been reading.
You know, I guess, I guess there's, just one thing I wanted to point out. In the removal of B, C, D, and E, F, Q, okay, we remove those, you got to, you got to notice that C's attachment to A, about two-thirds of that wall right there, C was built before A. A. A is the newest building of that complex. So that wall right there, will, when that C comes down, they will have to leave that portion of the wall, which was really not part of that building, in order to keep it structurally sound. So we have to keep that in mind. If they were to take that down, you'd have one big open hole there. So that, that presents a concern for me. But that said, there's things, there's workarounds for it, so I would, I would be in full support of this amendment.
Thank you. Alderman Engelberger.
Thank you, Your Honor. I guess I'm not understanding why we are voting on something that is already in place. This was voted on eight to three in September, exact same thing. So I'm not sure why we're voting on something that's already in place.
We're authorizing the money to do the work.
Well, that's, comes to my second point. I'm not sure how many seven-hundred-and-forty-thousand-dollar change orders you've had, Scott, but I've never seen one in a thirty-eight years of my years in the construction industry. You know, if we're, we as a municipality are gonna start borrowing seven-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars or forty-thousand dollars, and not even bid it out, are you kidding me? I believe our policy is, what, twenty-five thousand? Anything over twenty-five thousand, we have to bid out, Rodney?
For public construction.
For construction, but this is demolition.
Okay, so public construction is fine, but demo a building, seven-hundred-and-fifty-thousand, we're just gonna do a change order? Give me a break. If we're gonna do that kind of stuff, we need to really examine some things with this city. That's crazy.
Alderman Reeves.
Well, mostly, actually, just a couple of questions. So I heard Council President Swadley, at one point, say you wanted to remove the language saying demolition moratorium. Did I understand that correctly? I just want to make sure I heard the...
We would still have the moratorium on the blacksmith shop. If I wasn't clear, that's what I meant.
And in terms of the money, I guess I'm wondering, do we need to think about authorizing up to a dollar amount, as opposed to authorizing the funds in case it comes in at a point that, you know, is not seven-hundred thousand, but nine-hundred-and-fifty thousand? I'm just wondering if we need to think about adding language to cap that without reviewing it again? Something to think about, anyway.
Okay, thank you. I have Alderman Johnson, and then Hirsch.
Thank you, Your Honor. I'm disappointed that we're reversing what we decided to do. I think it's not a good decision when we're reevaluating on trying to preserve something. I'm not saying that all needs to be done, but we're just starting to get the RDA going and looking at this. We just put thirteen million on the books last week, and now you guys want to put another billion? I don't know where the money's coming from, and I'm really disappointed at that. I was here a couple of feet from Steve, and I didn't hear that these buildings were gonna implode on people. He said there was a couple areas, and yes, there was E probably, but if you look at, when you were there, here, I mean, I'm just so surprised that everyone's taking that this place is just falling down and around us. From what I got from him, there are some certain areas, but everyone's been scared that this place is gonna kill people if you walk by it. It's, and we're worried about the insurance, but from what he said, when he was standing here in front of council, the buildings are not that much disrepair, that it was the top facade parts. And if that's the case, let's go kick 'em over and keep the buildings and see if we can do something. But I disagree with, maybe it's election year and people are worried, and they need to move on, but I disagree with changing this right now.
Okay, thank you. Alderman Hirsch.
I just want a clarification. So you're willing to, like, go up to seven-hundred-and-forty-thousand dollars? You don't want RDA to get grants? You don't want, you want this to move forward? I mean, again, you're talking about spending, you're talking about borrowing, and you're not being prudent with our taxpayers' money. If we could get half of it paid for with grants, why wouldn't we do that? I'm, I'm appalled that you guys just think that our citizens are willing to pay more in taxes, because we're not willing to wait to get some money to pay for part of it. I, if that's what I'm hearing, I, I think we need to really let the RDA do their job, let Gary Becker do his job, which is what we pay him to, to find some grants to help pay for this demolition.
Council President Swadley.
Thank you. So I'll respond to that. You know, the RDA's had since September to apply for the grants.
No, we haven't. We're, we're right now... Alderman Hirsch says he has a...
In September, the council went on record and said, "Go ahead and bid it out." At that point, the RDA could've went out and got grants. Nothing stopped you from doing that. What we're doing now is we're making the decision to move forward. I can tell you, the people I've talked to in the community, and I've talked to a lot of people lately, have no emotional attachment to that building. You start talking about the eighteen-ninety-two building, it's different, okay? But as far as this building here, people are just like, you know what? It's time to move on from it, and we have to listen to the constituents. And I said, "Here's how much it's gonna cost," people didn't even blink, which surprised me, but I watched and I listened, and that's the response I've been getting. So if we can get the grants, that's great, it's gonna take a while to get our ducks in a row, anyway. And if anything you get, certainly will be used and appreciated, but at this point, you know, the road's been closed a long time, and the community wants to move forward, and that's what we need to do. It's not, you know, something that gives me great joy to do, because I would've given a choice, I would've loved to preserve the building. We had one opportunity to do that, that ship has sailed, it's time to move on.
Thank you. Alderman Hirsch.
First of all, I never said that I was voting to save these buildings. You put those words in my mouth. I said, "We need to be prudent with our taxpayers' money." Second, the SAE grant, you can only apply for, if you remember, so it's not on RDA. You can't apply for it until we've got done with the Milfab thing, because we already have a SAE grant. So when that is paid for, and we go through all the paperwork, the WDNR, then we can apply for it again, not before. So it's not that this, the RDA did not do their job. So I really take great offense in that, and I think Gary would be really quite upset that you would say that. Second, we just got this resolution from Greg in the last couple of weeks. Gary's been trying his hardest to try to look at grants, to so, to save us money. I'm just saying, let him do his job, let us save money. So we can, if we're spending all our money here, what you're doing is raising the density of all the other development that has to go down there. People want green space down there. If we're spending all this money all the time, we have to put more housing development down there and less green space. I'm trying to get the people what they want, less cost, more green space.
Further comments or questions? I'll have Alderman Duranik.
Yeah. I don't think that passing this resolution will limit you from looking at grants. We're directing the RDA, we're giving them direction, along with how much money we're willing to spend, and saying, "Okay, now it's in your ballpark, take a look at it. We certainly want to see the offending buildings removed as soon as possible," but it doesn't mean that you can't look at the schedule and where it fits with the state grants. I think this is something that the RDA kinda needs to take a look at. So that's, that's all my intention is, is to give the RDA direction, and hopefully, you can take a look at what is available out there for grants. And if you have to delay a demolition for a month or two, because you may be able to get a grant, well, I think the RDA needs to evaluate that, then.
Thank you. Alderman Engelberger.
Thank you, Your Honor. I don't believe we have enough information here to make an informed decision. This is kinda ridiculous. We're putting the cart before the horse, again, and, you know, there's a lot of things we need to consider, including whether this thing's gonna get bid out or not, and a lot of other things that need to be considered. So I just feel that this probably should be tabled.
Is that a motion?
So moved.
Second? Sorry, who made that second? Alderman Johnson? Motion to table is not debatable? We'll vote by roll call.
No.
Johnson.
Yes.
Reeves.
No.
Mieske.
Aye.
Engelberger.
Aye.
Jensen.
No.
Trul.
No.
O'Connor.
No.
Bartlett.
No.
Hirsch.
It doesn't really matter, it's, no, it's already lost.
Duranik.
No.
Did you get everyone? That motion fails on a vote of five, six, seven, eight to three. That takes us back to the motion on the floor, and I'll have Holly read the motion by Council President Swadley.
All right, there was a motion to authorize and direct proper city officials to authorize the funds needed for the development, the redevelopment authority to start the demolition process for the highway trailer buildings complex, excluding the blacksmith shop.
And that was a motion by Swadley, second by Duranik.
I'm sorry, can you read that one more time?
Yeah.
Can you read that one more time?
So it was the motion to amend the motion for resolution authorizing and directing the proper city officials to authorize the funds needed for the redevelopment authority to start the demolition process for the highway trailer building complex, excluding this blacksmith shop.
It's not including the blacksmith shop anymore, though.
She said excluding. Excluding.
So, just to make things a little simpler, because we've got this resolution?
Yes.
So I, I read your amendment as kind of, "That language would replace the entirety of this document," as I understand what you're saying.
Yeah.
That's fine. Keep it simple.
Replace this Resolution Forty of two thousand and eighteen.
It's to amend this resolution with just that language, instead of what we have here now.
Right. Okay, we'll vote by ro, I'm sorry, Alderman Trul.
To the point of authorization, as someone had asked that question, again, as the head of RDA, I'd want to make sure I know what I'm taking back, but I guess I would, I would encourage us, if we are, based on, on the current estimate, we have a seven-hundred-thousand-dollar number from Earth to take everything but the blacksmith down. To the discussion about the fact that we are going to likely have some additional engineering costs and things like that, I would, I would suggest, as a, hopefully a friendly amendment, that perhaps we cap, to the point, we cap that at seven-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars. That effectively will give us, at least, if anything over that, would have to come back to us, but the idea being that we believe we can get, get the building taken down by Earth for seven-hundred-thousand dollars, but I know there will be some additional engineering costs. So, you know, to the point of...
I'm okay with that.
Yep.
Denise made the second.
I'm okay with it.
Can you reread, can you read it, then, as amended?
A motion to amend the resolution authorizing and directing the proper city officials to authorize the funds up to seven-hundred-and-fifty-thousand needed for the redevelopment authority to start the demolition process for the highway trailer buildings complex, excluding the blacksmith shop.
Alderman O'Connor.
So for Tammy, I guess, is this, is this enough to include our debt limit in this next offering?
Yes, and this will all come back to the council on March twenty-seventh as well, so this isn't the final vote. But yes, I'll, I'll direct the financial advisor to include that in the future borrowing.
Alderman Engelberger.
Thank you, Your Honor. Is this the amendment we're voting on, or is this, what are we voting on after the amendment, if this is the amendment?
This is it. This amendment, it's my understanding, this amendment is replacing Resolution Forty of two thousand and eighteen.
This is Alderman Swadley's amendment?
This is substituted.
Which is essentially substituting his language.
It's a substitute motion, then. It's not really an amendment.
For this entire resolution. That's, that's a better way to look at it.
Okay, so basically, if this is, passes or fails based on this vote, I can't support this. I mean, you're talking about allowing or authorizing seven-hundred, up to seven-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars that's not budgeted right now. You know, we do this occasionally during the year, you know, five thousand dollars for the fireworks or something, take it out of contingency. You're talking three-quarters of a million dollars here. Is this how we operate in City Hall these days? Apparently. It's not gonna get my vote.
We'll vote by roll call.
Aye.
Johnson.
Nope.
Reeves.
Aye.
Mieske.
No.
Engelberger.
No.
Jensen.
Aye.
Trul.
Aye.
O'Connor.
Aye.
Bartlett.
Aye.
Hirsch.
Aye.
Duranik.
Aye.
That motion carries on a vote of eight to three.
Vote to adjourn?
There's a motion by Jensen, second by O'Connor. All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Those no, motion carries.